WDEV News presents. The regular monthly meeting of the Fintress County Commission. The Fintress County Commission meets the third Monday of each month and you can see it live on Channel 12 Cable TV. It's a presentation of the Union Bank of Jamestown and Clark Range, your reliable banking partner since 1904.
For more than a century, Union Bank has been serving the people of Fintress County. Now, as we begin a new chapter in our history of service, we want to take this opportunity to reassure you that while our building may be new, we're still the same friendly people you have known for years. Union Bank, the same people, the same goals, and the same commitment to you. Union Bank, your locally owned hometown bank for more than a century, growing to meet your needs. Equus and Leader Member FDIC.
... the life of the United States of America and to do the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, an individual with liberty and justice for all.
If you will bow your heads please. Your gracious heavenly Father, thank you, Father, for having given us such a beautiful day today. Lord, ask that you bless each and every one of us who have shared the night, Lord, in the county's mission. Ask that you bless this county and the communities in this county. I ask you, Father, to lead, guide, and direct us in the decisions that we have to make tonight. Stand with us as we will stand with you, Lord, and I ask it in Jesus' precious holy name. Amen.
I would like to say we appreciate everyone coming out tonight and also we're having a meeting tonight at five tonight because we have several graduations going on in the county tonight and tomorrow night also. If we can ask County Court Clerk Marilyn Stevens, she'll call the roll.
May I get my roll?
Here.
Justin Miller?
Here.
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 Benny Hughes?
Here.
Robert Cooper?
Here.
Lester Gooding?
Here.
Leon Steff?
Here.
Larry Cooper?
Here.
White Blacky?
Here.
Item number six. Everyone's had a chance to look over the minutes. Need a motion on that, please.
Move to accept both sets.
Motion made by Commissioner Cooper to accept both sets. You're a second?
Second.
Second's been called for. Commissioner Gooding, any discussion? Please call the roll.
Vicky?
Four.
Justin?
Ford.
Rod?
Ford.
Kim?
Four.
Benny?
Four.
Robert?
Four.
Lester?
Four.
Leon?
Four.
Larry?
Four.
Wade?
Four.
Ten-four, none against.
Motion's to approve the minutes passes. Looks like we have, on the notaries, we have a new application by Savannah P. Gunner, a renewal by Herbert Mark Justice, renewal of Vicky L. Stevens, and renewal Patricia S. Garrett. Do I hear a motion to that effect? Approve those.
Make a motion to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Gooding to approve. Second?
Second.
Second by Rod Williams. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Contrary, no. Item number seven. Consideration of resolution approving the issuance of the bonds by the Greenville Board to finance the Fintress County Jamestown Village Apartments project. Ms. Leslie, if you care to comment on that.
I'd be glad to, and I know this is a little bit of confusing prospect, but essentially the federal law allows nonprofit corporations who are investors in certain projects such as low-income housing developments to come in and issue tax-free bonds up into a percentage of their project. Now, this can be a project that is only one town's unit, which we have over here in Jamestown, Jamestown Village, but they can also lump them together so that their entire project is larger and they can issue additional tax-free bonds. And when I say the investors are issuing these bonds, it's truly a nonprofit organization. It's not they're asking Fintress County to issue them. It's just that they have to have acknowledgement from Fintress County that those bonds are being issued tax-free for a percentage of their project so that they can then come in here and do the rehab that they have scheduled for the Jamestown Village. It's a federal requirement. They had to have a public hearing, I think that was held the end of April, April 29th. And basically, they have three to four months span of time and a million and a half roughly dollars set aside for Jamestown Village. They're going to come in and redo all the units over there. They're also going to redo them at their four other facilities that they have, and the reason you see the word Greenville on here is because I think that's the town or county in which they're based originally. But they have to reach out to each individual governing body to say, hey, we're issuing some tax-free bonds, appreciate you, we're coming into your town to do this renovation, rehabilitation, and like I said, it's just a federal law requirement. We're not asking you, the county puts out no money. The county gets no money, but they will be doing the most of their purchasing here locally. They don't have to do that, but they've agreed to do that just because that's what they do as a nonprofit. They try to use local sources for labor and subcontracting and for products that they purchase. So, it'll be bringing in some revenue into the county close to the, I think, September of this year maybe they're going to start. They're really looking forward to getting going on all these projects, but if you've been over to Jamestown Village, you know that it's not been renovated since it was built 25 years ago. And this will be the first project that they do. They'll start with the open units, they'll move anybody that needs to have their unit renovated completely into the open units once they're done, kind of move people around if they need to, but they said for the most part they could do these renovations with people actually still in their units, the painting, that sort of thing, but the roof structure and what they're going to do over there. But again, they're not asking you all to put out any bonds, you're not issuing the bonds, they are. No expense to the county. It's an acknowledgement essentially that this private nonprofit corporation is coming in to issue these federal tax-free bonds in your jurisdiction. And who will buy them, who knows? They sell them out to hundreds of investors and they get a percentage of money back on them later on, so that isn't anything that we'll have that information today on, but because they haven't issued them yet, you all have to acknowledge that first. That's all they're asking.
Chairman, I move we accept this resolution.
Motion's been made by Commissioner Cooper to accept. Do I hear a second?
I second that.
Commissioner Leon Steff, second's the motion. Any further discussion?
It would if you look at that bottom line, it says they're going to spend $2,500,000 on the Fintress County units.
Yeah, I knew it was quite a bit in my head, just off the top of my head, I knew it was over there.
It's a pretty good chunk of what they're issuing, so that's pretty good for Fintress County.
They did tell us they tried their best to buy as much stuff local as they could, you know, so.
And use local subcontractors.
Yep.
Coming from Greenville, I don't think you know a lot of people over here, so they were looking forward to that.
Roll call vote.
Vicky? Justin?
Ford.
Rod?
Ford.
Kim?
Four.
Benny?
Four.
Robert?
Four.
Lester?
Four.
Leon?
Four.
Larry?
Four.
Wade?
Four.
Motion passes, ten-four, none against. Item number nine, the consideration of a resolution 2019-09 authorizing the application for tourism enhancement grant funds from the Tennessee Department of Tourism Development, Economic and Community Development. Ms. Amanda, would you care to go with that and tell them what it is?
Yes, yes. I believe it was last week we submitted a grant application for a tourism enhancement grant from the Department of Tourism partnering with the Department of Economic and Community Development, and our grant total project was 69,000. And of course, we had to relate this back to tourism, so it also had to be locally owned Fintress County property. So, County Executive Johnson, along with Amanda there, worked with the park ranger down at Sergeant Gordon Park, and you know, we've got that bit of property right next to the fire hall there. So, the park ranger Josh down there had the idea of doing a community pavilion, almost like a farmer's market, but we thought if we put the name of Farmer's Market, a market, you know, we might, it might end up being like a flea market. So, a pavilion, we can use it to sell goods, hold entertainment events there in the Palma area. Our match on that was $3,450 to get 65,500, so 95-5, pretty good deal.
Make a motion to accept the resolution.
Motion been made to accept this proposal. Do I hear a second? Second by Commissioner Mickey McDonald.
I'm betting.
Any discussion?
Yeah, our paper says $3,750.
Maybe I'm a total now.
I checked that, I just checked the application, so I think, yeah, I checked the application that I submitted, and it's 3,450.
Okay.
Any more discussion on the matter?
$300 deal there.
Roll call vote, please.
Vicky?
Four.
Justin?
Ford.
Rod?
Ford.
Kim?
Four.
Benny?
Four.
Robert?
Four.
Lester?
Four.
Leon?
Four.
Larry?
Four.
Wade?
Four.
Ten-four, none against.
Motion passes, ten-four, none against. Item number 10. Consideration of approval of the proposal for the Tennessee Housing Development Agency's home grant projects. Amanda Maynard.
All right, we are moving on down our list. We bid two more houses last week as well. Wilder Bowles out, as well as Betty Bowles, out on Saxony Avenue toward Allard. Wilder's, her house, it's Wilder and Bobby, their house come in, we're actually going with the second low bid because the low bidder turned the house down. The second low bid on that is $38,300, and then Betty's house is $38,500. Of course, you know, this is a 100% grant, it's just flow through money from the county.
And how many did you think we've bid this year on this, this makes?
This will make eight, and then I've done the math, we have $31,525 after we award these tonight, so we'll be able to do one more house. For bidding, I'm actually going tomorrow, Mr. Johnson's let me have permission to speak on behalf of Fintress County at the THGA Grant Committee meeting in the morning, and our contract is actually up June 30th, but you never know how, you know, with construction, how things are going to go. I've asked for an extension to October 31st in order for us to spend that last little bit of money. It takes time to get the work right up done, the laser base, paint inspection, the environmental review, it just takes some time to do that, so October sounds a lot better than the end of June.
So, we've probably come up with the summer's around $200,000 through THGA, probably?
Our total grant was $375,000 was our total grant project. Of course, you know, we spent about $40,000 on each house, that's taken out, there's 6% of administration fees of that 375, so we've done some really good work, really good work there.
Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Motion made by Commissioner Gooding. Second by Commissioner Hughes. Any more discussion on the matter? Roll call vote, please.
Larry?
Four.
Wade?
Four.
Leon?
Four.
Lester?
Four.
Robert?
Four.
Benny?
Four.
Kim?
Four.
Rod?
Ford.
Justin?
Ford.
Vicky?
Four.
Do you have any more questions for Ms. Amanda because I believe she has another appointment?
Thank you.
Thanks, ma'am.
Item number 11. Consideration of declaration of surplus property as presented by the Fintress County Electoral Commission. Joe, you want to explain what all this is?
Yes. The micro vote, 464 machines, double big blue suitcases, we have 27 of those there off suite, we're just, they need to be closer. The other items, Robert, they're at the office, if you want to start looking at them, they don't work, and they just some weeks, you wait a few years, and they need to be disposed of. Micro vote said they would take the old voting machines back that we no longer use and later would resign.
I move we approve.
Mr. Commissioner Cooper, Larry Cooper, made the motion, second by?
I'll second that.
Second by Commissioner Robert Cooper, any discussion?
Is there, I guess there's not any personal information on these machines.
No, there is, they're old machines, they're off suite, and they just take up space.
Just make sure we know publicly that we're not giving any of our information out or anything, it's just?
They're just, they're just old machines. I think we've quit using them in 1996, and we've been holding them ever since.
Been storing them.
We don't get nothing for them, they're just?
No, micro doctors said they would take them just to get them out of the way. The only thing that could do with them is they'll just travel and resign.
Any more discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Vicky?
Four.
Justin?
Ford.
Benny?
Four.
Robert?
Four.
Larry?
Four.
Wade?
Four.
Lester?
Four. Leon?
Four.
Rod?
Four.
Kim?
Four.
Ten-four, none against.
Ten-four, none against.
Thank you very much.
Yes, sir. Item number 12. Consideration of the Fintress County EMS Internal Control Policy. Micah Dunford, EMS Director, would you like to present that, please?
This policy that you have in front of you is just an updated policy from what the commission passed several years ago. That policy alluded to our third-party billing services at that time, and we just had to change some verbiage in there in order to meet the standards that we're doing now.
Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Motion made by Commissioner Lester Gooding. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Matthews. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Contrary, no. Micah, would you elaborate just for a minute on how our billing is going since you brought it back in-house?
The billing is actually doing very well. You know, we're not, we've had a few little hitches along the way of learning processes and thinking about that, but the ladies are doing a really good job, standing on top of everything, and everything seems to be rolling in. Just bragging on them a little bit, they said when we brought the system back in that it could take maybe up to four weeks before we'd see Medicare dollars, and the girls were doing good, we had Medicare checks coming in in about two weeks off stuff that we're building, so they've done really good there, so I'm proud of them.
Item number 13. Consideration of the Fintress County EMS Information Systems Operation Disaster Recovery Plan. Micah?
In the data age that we live in, everything that we do is on computer these days, and audit and other people want you to have information, recovery, Tyler hooked me onto this. We didn't have a policy in place at the ambulance service, and he shared one that he had and we kind of tweaked it around, but just what we were doing there, basically saying that our systems that we use, the companies have a recovery plan in case that stuff is down, that our systems are backed up on a regular basis, they have their own policies there. But it also states that if, because everything is internet-based, if something happens to the internet, that we do have downtime procedures and all that, so that's basically those four pages in a nutshell. But it's broken down into who you contact if something's not working right and all that.
Do I hear a motion for, to accept the disaster recovery plan?
I'll make that motion.
Commissioner Robert Cooper made the motion, second by Commissioner Justin Miller. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Thank you, Micah. Item number 14. Consideration of the Clark Range Regional Business Park Secondary Entryway Proposal. Mr. Rob Bandry's going to come forward and talk about that, I believe. This is not the front entry, it's one you want to develop at the back, correct?
Yes, it is. It's right at the, as you drive in on International Drive. Right now, it's like, where does the park start and where does it end? We went after a grant, and that was the biggest complaint that they had about everything that we put together to show off the industrial park, and this was for a pretty good-sized grant. So, he said, we just really recommend that you do something so that you know when you arrive, because you know, it's insane until they get there, until somebody tells you. And so, we really feel strongly that this is something where you need to get better grants to get it back in the future.
And whilst you're doing your asking for a 50-50 split on this, is that correct?
Yes. Has anybody showed any, has any company showed any, anything about coming in or any kind of interest? We do have one company that we are talking to, a local company, but we have not been able to get our times together to get them in there. He's a very, very business man.
They did get one from the state today that Scott, Samman was in the office today, and I did bring his attention to it, it came in today, and it's something that possibly could work out there. It is like a bottling facility for dairy products or something of that type, and they're looking for a, just land right now is what they're looking for, I believe, so.
Correct.
But anyway.
So, you're asking county to get the fund, a $24,000 project on sand, which 12,000 of it will be county used to park, correct?
That's right.
Is there a motion?
How much money, I need to ask a question before the motion, if you don't care. How much money is, was already spent on the current sign that we have out there right now? How much, how much money has the county already spent on signage up there?
Don't know. This is before my time.
Well, I can tell you, on the Clark Range Business Park out there, total development cost out there has been $4,652.33, $333.99. That's been $3.2 million in grants, that's 69% of it. ID boards put 1.1 million, which is 25%, and the Fintress County Government's put $279,000 into it, 6% of total cost.
Where did the ID board get their funding?
The county gave them buildings. We did our funding through?
Oh, yeah, county gave them the buildings to sell.
Most of our money is derived from, excuse me, the Fitzgerald facility that is behind, they're buying that facility at all time, and so most of our money comes from there.
Also, they've pretty much sold all of the buildings, they don't own them. Is that the last building you own?
It is. And those were buildings that the county gave them, correct?
Right, they were officially county buildings.
You want to take any action on this tonight, or do you want to wait till Mr. Samman's here next month, do a little more, whatever y'all want to do, it's up to y'all.
I don't think it's going to change anybody's mind who presented, why don't it change my mind?
Well, it'd be different, I believe it'd be different if we actually seen something out there, and we haven't yet.
Well, I don't think that?
We've been working on this 20 years or so.
Rod, as businessman, is not going to locate in that building because we don't got a nice sign there. If he wants to locate out there, he's looking for the property, you know, to relocate his business, or even start a business. I don't necessarily think a really nice sign is going to, is that going to change your mind, Rod?
No, but the, I would be looking for something that is pad-ready, and the sign's going to help, of course, in the, in TVA, TVA's the one that recommended the sign, to at least know where the property starts and begins, because, I mean, you pull in the main, main part there, and there is a little sign out there, but the property actually doesn't begin?
Pretty good way.
Till you get back in there. And that's, you know, to help with TVA to, you know, for them to give us more grants or consider more grants, they, they need a clear definition of where the property begins at. As far as having, they are real close to being ready to show somebody right now, I think you can't sell off empty shelf, and that's what you're selling off out there. There's not really, it's not as ready as everybody thinks it is for somebody to go in there to do anything when there's properties, buildings, and stuff sitting.
But if we're needing a pad-ready sign, $12,000 would go, or a decent chunk on a, on a pad-ready sign instead of a fence, or a gate. You know, if, if they were asking for a pad-ready sign, I'd give them $12,000, you know, not worry about it, but?
It would take more than $12,000?
Well, I know, but? But if we, if we waste $12,000 on a sign, on a gate, then that's $12,000 we can't fund toward that pad.
I agree with that.
The grant that we went after was for a pad-ready sign, it was going to be something like, gosh, I don't quite remember, but it was, the grant was quite substantial, and we didn't get it, and it's, one of the biggest criticisms they had was, we'd really like to see that there was a business park signed when we get to the actual business park. And so, we were turned down for that grant for a pad-ready sign, and that would cover 8% of the cost.
They actually told you in the letter that we didn't get the grant because we didn't have a sign on it?
Do you have that writing?
They, no, no, they, they were just, they were talking, they were consulting, and they were, they were talking to us at?
Could you get that in writing?
Could I?
Yes.
Could I, believe, well, they did put a report together, it might be written, I asked Scott if he's got that, because I don't know. But if we needed to expedite this issue, we could, I think we should table this, but Samman could be here now.
Maybe get that information, like if there was a report, something that references that, maybe that would help.
I'll second Leon's motion. Motion's been made by Leon Steff to table this motion. Commissioner Justin Miller, second it. Roll call vote.
Vicky?
Four.
Justin?
Ford.
Rod?
Four.
Kim?
Four.
Benny?
Four.
Robert?
Four.
Lester?
Against.
Leon?
Four.
Larry?
Against.
Wade?
Against.
Seven-four, three against.
Seven-four, three against. Seven, four, three against, motion passes. This will have, this will need to be the first item brought up next month, at next month's meeting, because it hasn't been tabled. And the, if you'd like to have some more insight on this, I'm sure the June seventh ID Board meeting is at eight o'clock, correct?
That's right.
Eight AM. Alrighty. Thank you, Mr. Andrews. Number fifteen, consideration of the following budget amendments. Mr. Joy, I believe you're up first, old buddy. Go right ahead, Joy.
The next big item there is probably ten thousand, that there is on for asphalt coal mix, probably, Joy. Highway and bridge maintenance, that's where it's going. And it's one twelve six twenty-four. The one seventeen two forty-six, is that there what you have for bridge construction and you're actually just taking out the one twelve six twenty-four, probably, is that what that is, Joy?
I believe it's one oh five nine eighty-two. I move a week, free to transfer.
I'll second. Motion's been made by Commissioner Larry Cooper, seconded by Commissioner Lester Gooding. Any more discussion? Roll call vote.
Larry.
Four.
Wade.
Four.
Lester.
Four.
Leon.
Four.
Benny.
Four.
Robert.
Fuller.
Mickey.
Four.
Justin.
Ford.
Rod.
Ford.
Fuller. 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 Those retirement ones are some hybrid stabilization, something they miscalculated to start with, they said it was new and it's something they've miscalculated to begin with.
Do I hear a motion? Make a motion to approve. Motion made by Commissioner Lester Gooding to approve, do I hear a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Benny Hughes, any discussion?
Can we make in there that it's the one forty-one budget, all of one forty-one budget amendments? Because there's several.
Are there all one forty-one? There's nine of them.
Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Mickey.
Yeah.
Justin.
Ford.
Rod.
Ford.
Kim.
Fuller.
What'd you say?
Benny.
What'd you say?
Robert.
Four.
Lester.
Four.
Leon.
Four.
Larry.
Four.
Wade.
Four.
Ten, four, none against.
Ten, four, none against. Next is rescue squad in the amount of thirty-five hundred, fifteen dollars and seventy cents. Joe McGrogan, would you like to address that, please?
Yes, sir. Good evening, it's just a little money from one line item to another in order to pay for the replacement of light bars on a number of our units that had the old mechanical rotators on it and they were going bad, so we had to put LEDs on it and including money to cover.
Hear a motion? Make a motion to excel. Motion made by Commissioner Lester Gooding, do I hear a second? Second. Seconded by Commissioner Miller, any discussion? Roll call vote.
Mickey.
She said four.
You're just waiting.
Ford.
Rod.
Ford.
Kim.
Fuller.
Benny.
Four.
Robert.
Four.
Lester.
Four.
Leon.
Four.
Larry.
Four.
Wade.
Four.
Ten, four, none against.
Amendment passes, ten, four, none against.
I think that's a big bad.
There's some more rescue squad stuff.
Yep.
Finance and human resources in the amount of fifteen hundred and fifty dollars.
This is for our communication lines, this is to cover where it will be over. We added Becky in so that she can combine into ours over and get, be able to access the personal record, she's inquiry only, on the county side of things, so that she can see whenever she's researching that or anything like that. When we combined her in, this cost came into that, and of course, the cost of moving and having to get a new system, this is no no money, it's all coming from lines that's throughout the finance budget.
Do I hear a motion? Make a motion to excel. Motion made by Commissioner Lester Gooding, do I hear a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Robert Cooper, any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Mickey.
She said four.
Justin.
Ford.
Rod.
Ford.
Kim.
Fuller.
Benny.
Four.
Robert.
Four.
Lester.
Four.
Leon.
Four.
Larry.
Four.
Wade.
Four.
Ten, four, none against.
Ten, four, none against, amendment passes, chances, Chancery Court, Ms. Linda Smith.
I'll speak on this one. This is one last year, whenever we were budgeting, we went back and forth on raises and ended up doing a twenty-five cent across the board. Linda had actually requested, Linda Paulette did not get the raise last year, and Linda Paulette agreed to that. Well, when we decided to do twenty-five cents for everybody, she got the raise and we just did it in the budget. It is no money, but not due to any fault of Linda Smith's. This is something that shouldn't have been in there to begin with, to give her the raise. It's a, it's a very bad communication on the finance side.
I move it to a program five twenty.
Motion been made by Commissioner Larry Cooper, do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Commissioner Robert Cooper, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Larry.
Fuller.
Wade.
Four.
Benny.
Fuller.
Robert.
Fuller.
Lester.
Four.
Leon.
Four.
Rod.
Four.
Kim.
Fuller.
Ford.
Mickey.
Four.
Ten, four, none against.
Amendment passes, senior citizen in the amount of fifty-five dollars.
Lift up, bring.
Second.
Motion's been made by Commissioner Larry Cooper, seconded by Commissioner Kim Davison, any discussion?
I want to let her, just so everybody else knows, that's our monthly budget amendment for our fundraising.
Roll call.
Larry.
Four.
Wade.
Four.
Mickey.
Four.
Justin.
Ford.
Rod.
Ford.
Kim.
Fuller.
Benny.
Four.
Robert.
Four.
Lester.
Four.
Leon.
Four.
Ten, four, none against.
Motion passes, library in the amount of seventeen seventy-one, Ms. Donna.
We send out letters every year for, to local businesses to get money donations for summer reading programs, and that was what we got from local donations. So we just want it moved from whatever line it was put in, when we turned it into trustee over into summer reading program, so we can spend it for that program.
Do I hear a motion?
I'll move.
Second. Commissioner Benny Hughes, seconded by Commissioner Lester Gooding, any more discussion? Roll call, please.
Mickey.
Four.
Justin.
Ford.
Rod.
Ford.
Kim.
Fuller.
Benny.
Four.
Robert.
Four.
Lester.
Four.
Leon.
Four.
Larry.
Four.
Wade.
Four.
Ten, four, none against.
Ten, four, none against, motion passes, local healthcare in the amount of three hundred and twenty-five dollars, Tyler.
This one's against covering overage. It's to do with their state retirement, and I assume that somebody, I'm pretty sure that somebody took retirement whenever we done the part-time retirement, somebody took and it wasn't budgeted initially.
Do I hear a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Robert Cooper made the motion.
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Kim Davison, any discussion? Roll call.
Mickey.
Four.
Justin.
Ford.
Rod.
Ford.
Kim.
Fuller.
Benny.
Four.
Robert.
Four.
Lester.
Four.
Leon.
Four.
Larry.
Four.
Wade.
Four.
Ten, four, none against.
Lot of budget amendments, but I think we have two more. Getting close to the end of the year.
This next one's in the commission budget, it is to cover legal services, it's over, we've got two more months of payments left for that, so.
Do I hear a motion? Make a motion to approve. Motion been made to approve by Commissioner Lester Gooding, do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Commissioner Leon Stepp, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Larry.
Four.
Wade.
Four.
Benny.
Four.
Robert.
Four.
Mickey.
Four.
Justin.
Ford.
Rod.
Ford.
Kim.
Fuller.
Lester.
Four.
Leon.
Four.
Ten, four, none against.
Motion passes, planning commission in the amount of thirty-one eighty-five, Tyler.
This one is still more than what we discussed the other night in the budget committee meeting. That is the annual dues that was not budgeted for into last year. We've, we've got the quarterly dues budgeted in there, but not the annual dues. That's for the Upper Cumberland Development District, that's, we've put the, two meetings ago, we put it off, brought it back up for the last budget committee meeting, and this is the same, same thing, it'll be, it's over.
Do I hear a motion?
Second.
Motion by Kim Davison, do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Commissioner Leon Stepp, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mickey.
Four.
Justin.
Ford.
Kim.
Fuller.
Rod. Ford.
Benny.
Four.
Robert.
Four.
Lester.
Four.
Leon.
Four.
Larry.
Four.
Wade.
Four.
Ten, four, none against.
Ten, four, none against, motion passes. The next one is for human resources, and it is moving twelve hundred and twenty-two dollars into a credit line item, twelve twenty-two, and it's taking six hundred from postal, three hundred from printing and stationery, three hundred and twenty-two from office supplies. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Mr. Robert Cooper made the motion, seconded by Commissioner Benny Hughes. Any discussion? Roll call vote.
Mickey.
Four.
Justin.
Ford.
Rod.
Ford.
Kim.
Fuller.
Benny.
Four.
Robert.
Four.
Lester.
Four.
Leon.
Four.
Larry.
Four.
Wade.
Four.
Ten, four, none against.
And in, in any other business, we have two budget amendments here, one is from the rescue squad.
Wasn't able to get this in your packet, I apologize for that. It's to move monies around, this is for the replacement vehicle that we bought with the county commission approval, and this is to install all the necessary emergency equipment into it, this is from a bid quote from communications evolution out of Cookland.
Make a motion to approve.
I'll second that.
Motion been made by Commissioner Gooding, seconded by Commissioner Davison. Any more discussion? Roll call vote.
Mickey.
Four.
Justin.
Ford.
Rod.
Ford.
Kim.
Fuller.
Benny.
Four.
Robert.
Four.
Lester.
Four.
Leon.
Four.
Larry.
Four.
Wade.
Four.
Ten, four, none against.
Ten, four, none against, motion passes, have another one by the election commission that failed to get his in on time. Next to the last.
Thank you, Joel.
Thanks, sir.
Morning to transfer out of line item seven nineteen dollars, supply of twenty-five hundred dollars to line item three fifty-five.
Make a motion to approve. Motion made by Commissioner Gooding, seconded by Commissioner Robert Cooper, is there any discussion?
Wants to travel forward.
Same, same.
Roll call.
Mickey.
Four.
Justin.
Ford.
Rod.
Ford.
Kim.
Fuller.
Benny.
Four.
Robert.
Four.
Lester.
Four.
Leon.
Four.
Larry.
Four.
Wade.
Four.
Ten, four, none against. Ten, four, none against.
Ten, four, none against. We have one more. Thank you, Joy. We have one more for the library.
She got a fifteen hundred dollar grant from the city for summer reading. I didn't actually get the check until Monday of last week, so I'm getting, I figured it through time that I've got, where I turn it into the trustee and all that. From, from the revenue level.
I'm sure they'd like one.
So that gives you twenty-two hundred dollars for your summer reading? Does that go with the first, first one here on the summer?
Yeah, the others was local donations. This was the easy grant.
Do I hear a motion? Commissioner Hughes made the motion. Do I hear a second?
I second.
Seconded by Commissioner Stepp. Any more discussion? Roll call, Marilyn.
Mickey.
Four.
Justin.
Four.
Rod.
Four.
Kim.
Fuller.
Kenny.
Four.
Robert.
Four.
Lester.
Four.
Leon.
Four.
Wade.
Four.
Ten, four, none against. Any further business to come before?
Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
So moved by Commissioner Cooper, seconded by Commissioner Robert Cooper. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Meeting adjourned. Thank you all for coming.